Good evening and welcome to this special town meeting forum being held live on Monday, June 13 at 6:00 PM. This is coming to you virtually from both PAC TV studio as town meeting members in our panel are participating remotely. I'm Steve Truffletti, Plymouth Town Moderator. I'm joined in the studio with Nicole Manfredi. She's the Assistant Town Moderator, also Julie Thompson, the Executive Director of PAC TV. And at this time, we'd like to welcome Nicole Manfredi, who's going to talk a little bit about some of the technical aspects of tonight's presentation and next week's special town meeting. Nicole?
Thank you. So again, I'd like to thank members in advance for supporting this virtual format. It's important that all members have a voice and that the health and safety during governance be top priority. It's our responsibility to eliminate access barriers for all town meeting members, and the data unquestionably proves that this virtual format has increased town meeting participation and attendance at its highest rate ever, nearly 100%. As Assistant Town Moderator, I can say with unwavering confidence that there has been no compromise of fidelity or transparency, and I am proud of what we have accomplished together. We have a large number of new town meeting members this round, many of whom have yet to be sworn in. This has made communication challenging for me with regards to training, so I would like to encourage all precinct chairs to please communicate the importance of training to all of your new members. I'm going to be offering two training sessions remotely beyond this evening. One will be Thursday, June 16 at 6:00 PM, and then the other will be Saturday morning, the 18th, at 10:00 AM. So there's plenty of opportunity for folks to join. As I mentioned previously, at this point, I don't have a complete list of town meeting members, so communication is a challenge, so I'm going to rely on precinct chairs to get that message out and have folks contact me if they're interested in participating in that training. If you are a new town meeting member, you must participate in a training session. A few reminders, participation and voting procedures will remain unchanged. If at any time you need technical support tonight or on Tuesday evening, you may call PAC TV at 508-830-6999. For immediate questions and concerns, you can contact me through the chat, the Zoom chat. I will be monitoring this consistently, as should all members. A few reminders, this evening, we will be taking some practice votes through the V Voter platform. I'm just reminding folks to hold your vote until the moderator indicates that the vote is open, and conversely, please don't wait until the countdown near zero to cast your vote. If you notice that your vote was not captured, please indicate this through the V Voter platform by requesting a point of order immediately. You will be acknowledged by myself and the moderator. If you hesitate to do so this evening and Tuesday, your vote may not be counted. We will not be making voting adjustments after we've moved on to the next article or motion. A little word of advice that we've learned over the last few years is refreshing V Voter before each vote is helpful. And I just want to remind folks, no content may be discussed in the chat, nothing of substance. If you have questions about a motion, or an article, or a presentation, you would like to speak, or you have a point of order, you must use the request to speak feature in the V Voter platform. Once again, if any town meeting members would like technology support on the evening of town meeting, they are encouraged to participate from the library at Plymouth North High School under the guidance of Plymouth High School students serving as tech buddies. Please contact me if you would like to be added to this list, so that I can arrange an adequate number of buddies. Again, please be sure to monitor the chat for important information and communication, both this evening and on Tuesday night.
Thank you, Nicole Manfredi. She's Assistant Town Moderator. Again, just to reiterate, for any town meeting members that did not receive login credentials, you certainly can watch this evening, and you're urged to contact the Town Clerk's Office tomorrow. A requirement for credentials next week will be that you will need to have been sworn in in advance by the Town Clerk. We also ask that, since the Town Clerk is the official record of elected officials and their addresses, it's important that town meeting members notify the Town Clerk as to email addresses and residential addresses, and we will endeavor to do that, as Nicole Manfredi mentioned. Although it's an individual responsibility of each and every elected town meeting member to go to the Town Clerk's Office, to be sworn in, to provide information, nevertheless, we are asking the chairs or the leadership in each precinct to also follow up after this evening with any of your elected members who are not participating this evening, to make sure that they understand that in order to participate next Tuesday, they'll need to be sworn in and have their login information. At this time, we're going to continue, and this evening, we have OTI Technology with us to help with the V Voter platform. We're going to go right to that V Voter platform and take our first vote, which will be attendance. So we're going to call that up on the screen at this point, and as we've done in the past, you'll see on the screen, there's going to be a roll call vote, and you're going to have 20 seconds in which to vote, to show that you're here, and we're going to begin as soon as the timer goes now. You can now go to your V Voter platform and please record if you are present. I'm going to urge all town meeting members to particularly look at your precinct to see who is not participating as being present, so that we can help our other town meeting members become present and voting. The voting has ended. We're now going to see the totals. We have 50 present, 50 out of 162. We have one person in Precinct 1, one in Precinct 2, five in Precinct 3. We're going to be scrolling through all the precincts. Next precinct, we're going on 1 and 3, and then several more in 4. I can see, I'm going to ask OTI if you can reset this, so it'll be per precinct, rather than mixing people in the precincts. We have six mixed with seven. We have eight altogether, and we have nine altogether. Again, only one in nine. So we have quite a few more town meeting members that we wish to invite to participate as we go through the precincts. We have about a little under a third of our town meeting members, precincts 10, 11, and 12, and you'll see the town meeting members who are present, and then 13, 14, 15. And we're going to continue. We have three additional precincts. 16, we have one person. 17, almost everyone. And 18. So you can see, we have at least one person in each precinct, and I'm going to be requesting that we think about contacting the other members who are not participating. Tonight's forum can be watched on Plymouth Government Access Channels, Comcast 15, Verizon 47, on Wednesday, tomorrow, Thursday, Friday at 4 o'clock. Also, next Monday and Tuesday at 8:00 AM, 11:00 AM, and on Monday at 7:00 PM, but not on Tuesday, since we'll be having a town meeting at that time. And we also have training videos available. So at this time, and Nicole is going to jump in. Go ahead, Nicole.
So I'm just noticing in the chat, there are a few questions that I think I can clarify. First, the V Voter information is embedded in the email that you received, that you used to access the Zoom meeting. So if you're here with us in Zoom, you have your V Voter information. Take a peek at the bottom of your email, there should be a link, and aside from that, should also be your credentials. Be sure when you copy and paste those, you don't copy and paste any blank or empty fields, or it won't accept your credentials. Second, it is not advised for you to watch this on television and participate through V Voter. There's a delay, and we find that when that happens, your vote isn't cast in a timely way, and then it's not counted. So I know that before this meeting began, we were running the training video, and we'll continue to do that, and I can send that link out again. But it's really important that folks watch that video, because a lot of, I think, what's happening in the chat I'm seeing will probably be resolved once folks go ahead and take a peek at that. The other thing I want to remind folks is, we do not use the hand raise feature through Zoom. As I mentioned earlier, if there's a problem with technology, or you have a question for me, type it into the chat. We're not monitoring the hand raise feature. I hope that helps.
Thank you. That's Nicole Manfredi. She's Assistant Town Moderator. At this time, we're going to try to put together the building blocks for town meeting, and for the most part, we'll go chronologically. So as we think about a town meeting, and this special town meeting, the first thing we have to do is, we have to have a warrant, or a warning, to the people in the town of Plymouth, and that responsibility is charged to the Select Board. And this evening, we welcome the Chair, Betty Cavaco. Betty, welcome.
Thank you.
And Betty, tell us a little bit about what it is that you and your board do in connection with the planning of town meeting.
Well, we are the ones that put all the articles together. Well, we don't do them ourselves. We have our town manager and staff have all our articles as we move forward with what our plans are for town meeting, whether it's, you know, some type of funding, some type of project, some type of bylaw. So we basically put everything together, get it on agenda, you know, send it out to all the boards and committees, and then we just go to town meeting.
Okay. And thank you, Betty. We're going to be coming back to Betty throughout the evening. And at this time, I'm going to go to Catherine Holmes. She is the Chair of the Committee of Precinct Chairs. And Catherine, for new town meeting members, as well as returning town meeting members, tell us a little bit about your committee and what they've been doing in preparation for town meeting.
Sure. Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Catherine.
Okay, excellent. So yes, thank you for having me tonight, Steve. I'm really excited to be here to talk about the Committee of Precinct Chairs and Town Meeting. I'm currently the Chairwoman for the COPC, and we meet the third Thursday of every month. We have a meeting which we basically compile all of the chairs from all the precincts, and we get together and we discuss anything that involves town meeting. This could be upcoming articles. Typically, topics that we've had in the past are talking to the school board about building, you know, building projects that they have, or the Hedges School that they wanted to close, the redistricting. It could be talking, we often have Mr. Beeter from our DPW come before us and talk about building maintenance, town projects that they have, and also, we have the support of FinCom. So Kevin Canty joins us when he can fit it into his schedule, because he's really busy with meetings as well, and we talk about the financial aspects of anything that comes before town meeting. It's a really important group. There's a lot of good work that we do, but our primary focus is articles in preparation from town meeting. Town meeting, for those that don't know, we meet right now twice a year typically. We meet in the spring, and that tends to be the biggest and longest type of town meeting that we have, because it includes our budget. The budget is always included as part of our package, and it talks about everything that the town needs in order to run, which is pretty critical. So, you know, it talks about, you know, we review the school budget to talk about salaries, raises, any union contracts that have been negotiated, we review those to approve them, any building maintenance that they require. We've done some work on several of our schools recently, on new roofs that were required. These are all things that come before town meeting. We also talk, you know, we go through all the budgets of all the departments. All that information is available to us, and we make sure that we understand what they need in order to run their department, and also, what does those departments feel like they need to do in order to make the town better. For example, oftentimes, there might be something that comes before us in the fire department, whether they need a new truck, whether they need, you know, whether there's a problem in the building regarding maintenance. All of that is covered, so that we can get an understanding of what the ask is for us, and why it's so important for us either to approve it, and it's an opportunity for us to bring in speakers to dig into things deeper before town meeting, to talk about, you know, what is the behind the scenes, what's the real source of some of the heartburn that some of these articles are being presented to us to solve. So we're really essentially trying to solve problems for the town, and make sure that they have the funding that they need. The COPC does a lot of this type of work, just to try to prepare and make sure that town meeting members have the training that they need, that they have an opportunity to talk to, say, Lynn Barrett, you know, our head of our finance, to talk about, you know, where is the funding sources for some of the articles that were being asked to approve? And so that's typically the main role of our Committee of Precinct Chairs. So a lot of it is just in prep for spring, and then we also have a fall town meeting. So fall tends to be in September. Am I right? September? And so in the fall, we typically have one, and so in preparation for each of those town meetings, right now, there's usually two. This year, we're having three, because we have this special need. There's some articles that have come forward, and so our Select Board called a special town meeting, which they can absolutely do, because we certainly don't want to slow down the workings of the town. So we are going to meet in June, in two weeks here, on a Saturday, and we're going to actually talk about the articles that have come before you. Now, you should have all received a book. However, because of the delays that we had with the redistricting, and because of some of the information gathering for the additional precincts, there's a lot of contacts that we didn't have. You may not have received your books yet, and if that's the case, that is not a problem. You can go down to the Town Hall. I talked to Larry Peiser, our acting Town Clerk today, and they have lots of extra copies of the books there. So if you don't have the information that's been mailed to you, just go down to the Town Hall, go into the Town Clerk's Office, and they will give you the books that you need. The books are going to provide you an enormous amount of information. It's the backstory on the, it'll give you, obviously, the article. It will tell you the language of the article. It will give you any back history. It will give you the finances. There's a lot of critical information in those books. There's also a motions packet that typically comes. Steve will probably talk about that shortly, and it'll tell you if anyone's made motions against some of the articles. So if you don't have your books, please reach out to the Town Clerk. Critical, as Steve said, everybody that is a town meeting member, regardless of whether you were a town meeting member before, or you're a new town meeting member, you need to be sworn in. You don't need to make an appointment with the Town Hall. Simply go into the Town Clerk's Office, and they will swear you in. It's a really simple process. It takes a couple minutes. I did get the latest list from the Town Hall this morning, actually, this afternoon, and there are several people that have not been sworn in. In preparation for town meeting, every precinct, and there's 18 precincts, has a caucus. The caucus is an opportunity for the voted, the elected, town meeting members to meet with our residents. It's also an opportunity for the town meeting members to talk and discuss the articles, and to bring in any speakers that they want to have to dig in deeper to articles. It's pretty important. It allows us to be able to, it allows us to be able to talk openly amongst ourselves within our precinct, ask any questions that we have. We often send questions back to either Finance, or, you know, Department Heads to clarify pieces before town meeting, so that we can have a really solid understanding before we get onto the floor to do the actual debating. And the other thing that happens at caucuses is, sometimes precincts decide, well, you know what? I like this article, but I'm not so sure about this piece of it. It's a time when the caucuses can get together and say, let's put a motion forward, and let's change this aspect of this piece of the article, and then it would go before the floor to get a vote. The biggest and best part about the caucus, which I love, is it's an opportunity for us to meet with our residents, and get the residents' feedback on where they want us to vote. And that's why we were elected. We were elected to actually vote and represent our voters, so it's really critical to give them an opportunity to come before us. So because of COVID, it's been really challenging. We haven't had an opportunity to really meet face to face. We've been trying to offer hybrid caucuses, where for a long time, it was just Zoom caucuses, and there were precincts that did get a big turnout. However, now that those restrictions have been lifted, many of our precincts are now doing face-to-face caucuses. So if you're a resident watching this, or if you have, you know, resident email addresses for your community, and you're a town meeting member, feel free to give them, when you've decided when your caucus is, send out the credentials for those people, and let them know, hey, we're meeting, you know, like Precinct 9, they are having their caucus tomorrow. We are meeting at the Little Red Schoolhouse. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Forgive me, we're going to. We're going to do a virtual one for this one, so we're going to have a virtual caucus. That information's posted on the town website. All the caucuses are posted on the town website, so residents and town meeting members can always go there to get their credentials if they need it. That's where they're supposed to be listed. If you are a clerk, or you're a town meeting member, and you need help getting your credentials posted on the town website, Steve, they reach out to, they can certainly reach out to me, but there's also, who's the contact? Is it the acting Town Clerk?
We're going to address that momentarily. The temporary clerk of town meeting will be speaking.
Perfect. Oh, awesome. Okay, so I won't rain on his thunder. Okay, so anyway, so that's the primary focus for us, is to make sure that you all have your information. The chairs are, there are equal members as town meeting. Their job is to communicate information to you, whether that's finance information, anything that comes before them, is to communicate information off to the full precinct. I have been chair for a couple of years now. One of my main goals as the chair has been to try to make sure that I disseminate a lot more information, and there's a lot more transparency. So I tend to send out emails to all town meeting. You'll see my name. We're actually up for reorganization Thursday night. This Thursday is our next COPC meeting, and then we'll reorganize and determine who's going to be the chair going forward into the next year. I hope it's me. Please vote for me. However, if it's, my daughter says she'll vote for me. So, thank you, Willow. So every third Thursday we meet, I don't have all the chair's information, which is the last point I want to make, and I know I've gone on for quite a while here. Every Thursday, every third Thursday, we meet because of the redistricting and the information coming in pretty slowly, and the caucuses, there's still caucuses that are, reorganizations that are happening this week. So we don't necessarily know who all the chairs are for all the precincts. So if you have just newly been elected as a chair, and you do not have the information, reach out to me. I'm going to send out an email to all town meeting members tomorrow morning with some critical town meeting information. Reach out to me, and I will give you the details, so that you can log into the meeting on Thursday. Because I don't know who your chairs are necessarily, even in that list that I just got from Larry, I don't necessarily know who I should be directing my Zoom link for. We will be meeting at the Great Hall in Town Hall on Thursday. That's where we're meeting. We're doing face-to-face meetings now. There's always a hybrid option. So you can either join remotely, or you can join in person. I invite every town meeting member to be able to join that Committee of Precinct Chairs. It's really important to give people a voice to be able to talk, in my opinion, and that's what I try to do. So regardless of whether you're a chair or not, you're always welcome. If you're a member or a employee of the town, you are always welcome. The Select Board have an open invitation. Sometimes they do join us as well. So Steve, I think I've covered everything. There's so much. We do have a handbook. We are updating it. It's, you know, we have new precincts, and we have this new charter commission that's happening, which is making a lot of changes. So once that's all sort of finalized, we are going to finalize our update to our handbook and get that out to everybody as well. Is there anything, Steve, that I didn't cover that you think I should?
I think that's terrific. Catherine Holmes is the immediate past Chair of the Committee of Precinct Chairs, and Catherine, thank you for participating this evening in the orientation. And before we move on, the report and recommendations of the Advisory and Finance Committee that she referenced is produced by the Advisory and Finance Committee. So if you did not receive it, you can contact the Office of the Advisory and Finance Committee, and Jeanette White, who is supporting the Advisory and Finance Committee, has those available for you. At this time, we normally, at town meeting, allow members to interrupt the discussion with a point of order, and so I'm going to go to that as we bring in Larry Peiser, who will be the next speaker for our orientation. But let's call in Precinct 18 Patricia McCarthy, who has a point of order. And while we bring her in on her point of order, I see another town meeting member who indicated he wants to speak on the motion. There is no motion before us this evening. This is really an opportunity for an orientation, for a presentation, and to preview the motion. So perhaps Precinct 6 Craig French can clarify why he's requesting. And while he does that, do we have Patricia McCarthy joining us? I see her on the screen. Pat?
Yes, I just have a quick question. Steve, could you pull up the screen in another few minutes or so again, so we can find out who in our precinct, and keep it on longer, to make sure we get our experts out for our precinct's activities?
Yes, we will do that.
It went quickly, and I had my chair send out a reminder for everybody. So, thank you.
We are going to do that. We're going to have several practice votes. At this time, Lawrence Peiser is the immediate, well, not the immediate, but was a past longtime serving clerk for the town of Plymouth, and at our last town meeting, he was also appointed and voted as the temporary clerk for the town meeting, and we expect that the Select Board, once again, will be proposing that the moderator cast a single ballot for Mr. Peiser to serve again as temporary Town Clerk. So Larry, we heard from Betty Cavaco, who told us that her board sets the warrant. Once they set the warrant, what is it that you do as the Town Clerk, and how does that office fit into the planning for town meeting?
Well, let's start with what happens before the meeting. I think many of the, in fact, most of the new town meeting members know that the Town Clerk swears in town meeting members. It's necessary. It actually states in the charter that if you're not sworn in in 30 days, you're not a town meeting member. So I think we're almost there. People should get to make sure that they're sworn in. Second thing we do before the meeting is, after the Select Board has voted the warrant as a favor to that office, we post the warrant. In Plymouth, it has to go to both libraries, the website and Town Hall, and when the warrant is there, people understand what's going to come before town meeting. The next thing that the clerk does is, we have to understand what the text of the motion is, and what order they're going to come in. Before we go to town meeting, on our computer, we make sure that every word that is going to be presented is there. There's no way that we can do that on the go. And then the Town Moderator presents us with information about how he's planning to run the meeting. So anything that's going to be in the minutes, we need to know before town meeting. At the meeting, the Town Clerk is the emergency moderator. If something were to happen to the moderator, and he was unable to attend, and thank goodness that doesn't happen, but if that did happen, the clerk would be the person who would call the meeting to order, and would conduct a vote for someone to serve as moderator of the meeting. We sit down, and the moderator gets up at the meeting and says, the meeting is open. Town Clerk notes the time, and the meeting is called to order. Town Clerk notes the time. Seems like basic duties, but when people are worrying about what's happening at town meeting, this is something that they need to know. The clerk also assists the moderator. The time that is spent goes very fast, and the moderator does an excellent job, and the clerk is one extra pair of eyes, noting what is happening at the meeting, and making sure that the moderator's statements that come out loud are what the town meeting has done. For example, there are votes that require two-thirds. The moderator almost always says that the vote requires two-thirds. In the rare instance in which it doesn't happen, the clerk will say, could you just say two-thirds? He does, and out we go. we go. Um, while the meeting is going on, the clerk notes the outcome of each motion so that the records can show whether it passed or not, and also how many people voted for, how many against, and how many abstained. Also have to note any amendments. Um, and this is one of the reasons that the moderator has required written amendments to motions. Um, the amendment to a motion is a part of the motion that, um, when the meeting is over, uh, has the force of law. So it's important that every word be correct. Also, there are procedural motions. Um, when someone says, for example, that they, um, are willing to end debate, uh, that, that gets entered into the minutes of the meeting. And finally, um, the clerk notes the time when the meeting dissolves, also notes the time when there are recesses. Um, the purpose of being clerk is not power, but there is one power that the clerk has. What the clerk says happened is what happened. Um, it is very straightforward, um, that, you know, anyone could have heard what they heard, but what the clerk writes down is what happens. And that's why we make sure that we have all of these pieces, um, ready to go so that the record is a fair record of the meeting. After the meeting, um, we generally have ten days before anything can happen because the town charter says that if voters are aggrieved by a, a vote of town meeting, they have ten days to gather signatures to put that on the ballot. Um, after the ten days, um, any bylaws, uh, that the town passes, whether there's zoning bylaws or town general bylaws, whether it's historic commission, historic district commission, um, changes, um, all of these things have to go before the attorney general. And the attorney general wants to make sure not only that these things passed, but that town meeting was called correctly and that the votes proceeded correctly. And the last piece I'll talk about is, um, when the treasurer needs to borrow, the bond council wants to know for sure that what town meeting did was legal. And, um, the, the packet of information that has to go to the treasurer for this purpose is voluminous. But it's basic because all of the things we talked about before are in place. Um, and of course, um, ten years later, if somebody wants to know what happened at town meeting, it's the record of the clerk and he puts that record in the town report, um, as well as in the archives of the town. It's that record that is, that makes it possible for future clerks to say, "I certify that that actually happened." That's the role.
Thank you. And that's Lawrence Peiser. And, uh, he is going to be, uh, likely to be our temporary clerk. And, uh, as part of the practice voting tonight, uh, we're just going to take procedural votes. But the very first procedural vote that you'll be asked to do, uh, would be, uh, a motion from Mr. Canty that the moderator cast a single ballot for Lawrence Peiser as temporary town clerk. So we're actually going to go to that. We're going to do that now, uh, kind of in response to, uh, Patricia McCarthy's request that you get to see the precincts again. So we're going to call up, uh, this particular motion and town meeting members are going to have a chance again, uh, to vote. And then we're going to scroll through the precincts. We're going to give, uh, town meeting members enough time to see, uh, who's present and who is not present. And, uh, we'll be seeing that on our screen momentarily. It's a motion, uh, for the moderator cast a single ballot for Lawrence Peiser as temporary town clerk. These are all practice votes. Uh, so for anybody, uh, who is not participating, uh, you haven't missed anything other than, uh, the opportunity to practice, although, uh, I just received an email from, uh, the assistant town moderator and she will be, uh, conducting her first, uh, of two sessions of town meeting trading, and she'll be doing that on Thursday at 6:00 PM. Here's your motion. It's on, going to be on the screen. Uh, a yes is a one vote. If we can show that, uh, to the viewers, uh, and to the people watching, uh, the vote. I'm seeing it, uh, on my, uh, computer here. If we can call that up for all of the viewers, uh, to be able to see. Uh, can they see that, Mr. McKinley? So, uh, this came from OTI and they're just showing us, uh, what the motion will be. And so we want to show that to everybody else, uh, on their screen. And then, uh, town meeting members will get a chance, uh, to practice the voting. Uh, and while, uh, we wait for that, uh, we're going to next be going to, uh, there it is. It's right there. So now you're going to have a chance this time to vote yes, no, or abstain. Uh, you'll see twenty seconds is the time in which you have to vote. Vote now. So we're asking town meeting members to vote on this practice vote. It's a procedural vote. Uh, and town meeting members, uh, following, uh, the vote, we're going to go, uh, to the various precincts and we're going to, uh, see how the precincts are voting. Uh, we understand through the chat that some people are still trying to log into the V voter. Uh, and so now what would normally happen is sixty-nine say yes, uh, two no, one abstentions. We picked up uh, more than twenty people. Now there we go. Uh, the first, uh, precinct one, uh, we have two people voting. Uh, precinct two, we have three. Precinct three, we have six. We have two-thirds of the precinct, uh, present and voting. Uh, as we go through, uh, please look at those who are present. Uh, precinct four, we have five people. Precinct five, we have four people. Precinct six, we have four. So again, not quite half the precinct, uh, as we try to bring everybody in. Uh, precinct seven, we have four voting. Precinct eight, we have seven voting. A majority of the precinct. Uh, precinct nine, only two. Uh, so again, urging, uh, town meeting members who are present and voting, uh, try to get out your other town meeting members. Uh, three in ten, two in eleven. Uh, we have six in twelve. Again, this is not required, so it may be that there are people that have a conflict, but, uh, we're pleased to see in precinct thirteen that we have six people voting. Precinct fourteen, three, just one in fifteen. Mr. Donahue, uh, if you can talk to your fellow town meeting members. Uh, precinct sixteen, we have two. Precinct seventeen, we have seven. Uh, just about that entire precinct and precinct eighteen, we now have five. So we've picked up, uh, quite a few people as we continue, uh, with this orientation. We're going to bring in, at this time, the town manager, Derek Brindisi. And Mr. Brindisi, we heard from, uh, your chair of the select board, who told us a little bit about, uh, the warrant. We also heard from your town, uh, the temporary town clerk of town meeting. And, uh, what do you have to add as your role and the role of your assistant, uh, as well, Mr. Brindisi?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for having me and welcome to all the town meeting members. I guess I can just take a little, um, uh, a few minutes, taking a step back on really talking about the warrant itself. You know, I know we have some new town meeting members and, uh, they may not actually know what the warrant is. Um, so the warrant, in short, is like an agenda and each one of the articles represent like agenda items. And so the process in order to build a warrant is the first thing we need to do is we need to open the warrant. So the select board will, uh, vote to open the warrant, um, uh, uh, date certain. And then to close a warrant, it's usually three to four weeks thereafter. And so that period of time where the warrant is open, it allows departments, uh, boards and committees, and even citizens to submit proposed articles. So again, these articles are like agenda items. Um, and so during that period of time, these, these proposals are submitted to our assistant town manager. Um, he will go ahead and he will build a draft warrant. Uh, that draft warrant will be sent to, uh, our town council for review. Um, and then once complete, uh, that draft warrant will be sent to advisory and finance, uh, and will also be sent to the select board. And as Chairman Cavaco pointed out, it's the duty of the select board to review the warrant and the articles that are contained within. Um, it's their warrant. They decide which articles will remain on the warrant that will go to town meeting, uh, or decide which articles they think are not appropriate for that time to go to town meeting. The only exception to that rule is citizens petitions. So a citizen's petition, um, it requires ten registered voters to sign on to a petition, uh, that would be submitted as part of the warrant. Um, the select board does not have control on whether or not those articles will move forward. Those articles will always move forward and can be discussed and debated at town meeting floor. Uh, I would, and so I think as already pointed out by others, uh, we typically have two town meetings per year. Uh, one in April is the annual town meeting, and then there's a fall town meeting that's typically held, uh, in the month of October. Um, then we can also have what is known as a special town meeting, which, uh, we're having next Tuesday, uh, and that can be taken up at any time. And so I would end by saying that, um, information regarding the warrant process and town meeting can be found, um, contained within the town charter, uh, and can also be found. There is, there is a chapter and section within our time, town bylaws that also describe the process, um, to, uh, develop the warrant and then to hold town meeting. Any, any questions? That's all I have.
Thank you. That's Derek Brindisi. He is the town manager, uh, for the town of Plymouth. And he and his staff will be, uh, at the great hall on, uh, the night of town meeting. And joining us now is probably, uh, the member of his staff that does the most, uh, talking at town meeting, uh, and that's director of finance Lynn Barrett. At least when it comes to the budget, we hear from Lynn often. So, uh, Lynn, welcome. And if you could explain, uh, to town meeting members, where do you fit in in terms of the planning process and participation at town meeting?
Thank you, Steve, um, and welcome to town meeting members, especially new town meeting members. So, um, the finance department works very closely with, um, the process of town meeting. It really starts with the budget. Um, according to the charter, the finance department is responsible for compiling and submitting the annual operating budget and capital improvement plan to the town manager. Um, our timeline starts in about September, um, through October where we compile, um, the budget requests. Um, we meet with the town manager and all of the, um, individual departments to go over those requests for both their annual operating budget and their capital. Um, the town manager then, um, develops a budget that he submits to the select board in December, and then the select board review that budget and submit their budget, um, recommendation to the advisory and finance committee in January. Uh, we work with the town manager's office and the warrant process and with the advisory and finance committee to schedule, um, all of the article reviews, the subcommittee budget reviews, capital article reviews, um, all with the advisory and finance committee in public meetings that are available to all town meeting members, um, and they're encouraged to attend. Um, every advisory and finance packet is put together with backup for the articles, uh, which contains a lot of material that's, um, uh, good information for town meeting members. Um, that information usually ends up in the advisory and finance, um, book of recommendations, um, that will, will go to town meeting members and be put on our, um, website. So, um, in my office, um, Jeanette White, who's our budget analyst, is the instrumental factor in putting all of this information together. Um, she assists the advisory and finance committee. She assists the moderator in organizing and putting together materials and, um, your books that are mailed to you, um, for town meeting and all of the information that goes on the website. Um, the finance department is there to answer town meeting questions. Um, we're available through email, through phone call, through coming into town hall. Um, usually we try to provide as much information on the website as possible to answer all of your questions. Um, and usually when we respond to email questions, I'll always respond and include the, um, chairman of the committee of precinct chairs and they'll usually forward to all town meeting members the answer to, to someone's question so that all town meeting members have the same information. Um, we work with everyone, um, on the final motions for town meeting, with the moderator, with council, with the town manager's office, advisory and finance, and the clerk. Uh, we track votes and work with the clerk's office on the certification of those, um, votes from town meeting. And then after town meeting, we set up all of the accounts, uh, for the budget, for articles, and our financial management system, and we track those items. Um, and we post, um, a lot of reports on the finance department website, which would include information from our annual budget and, and other pertinent information that town meeting members, I think, would be interested in. Um, we're always available for town meeting members to answer any questions. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is Lynn Barrett. She's the director of finance. Uh, one of the reasons that we're doing this evening is also to help people to understand, uh, who should be contacted, uh, if you have questions. Since, uh, often, uh, when I get questions, uh, if it's about the warrant, if it's about an article, I would refer people, uh, directly to the select board or to the town manager, the assistant town manager. Because, uh, although I'm the moderator, uh, these are not areas in which I have, uh, direct, uh, responsibility or authority. Uh, I do, however, uh, want to answer one question, uh, that came in from a town meeting member. Uh, and that is, uh, a town meeting member has indicated that, uh, today his spouse, uh, tested positive for COVID, uh, what to do. And will be following CDC guidelines, uh, in terms of quarantining, uh, and testing. So, uh, if that arises, uh, uh, that's how we're going to handle it. Uh, again, a reminder to town meeting members, one of the reasons why we are participating remotely is for this very reason, that unfortunately, uh, people locally in our community are still, uh, testing positive for COVID and it is directly affecting our town meeting and our town meeting members. And, uh, this just, uh, came in, uh, from one of our members. And at this time, we're going to continue, uh, and we're going to go to Kevin Canty. Kevin is the, uh, current chair of the advisory and finance committee. Uh, Kevin, welcome. And, uh, what do you want to tell us about, uh, your role and the role of your committee, uh, in connection with town meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, so as, uh, Steve just said, I am Kevin Canty. I'm the chair of Plymouth's Advisory and Finance Committee. So in a typical, in a typical year, there are, as has been mentioned, two planned town meetings every year. One happens in April, one happens in October. However, the town meetings themselves are just the tip of the respective icebergs. In both instances, months of work go in in advance of town meeting, uh, to vetting those articles, to putting those articles together and towards, uh, creating recommendations for town meeting that are presented i- in advance of town meeting to town meeting members so that when folks walk in to town meeting, uh, they have the most information they can about the articles that are before you. So, that, that information is produced in a book, uh, in the spring town meeting, which is produced in, uh, in April. That deals with the budget and it, there's also usually a standing special town meeting at that time to do some things during that fiscal year, which is what you can do with a special town meeting versus an annual town meeting. You can do something that takes effect during the current fiscal year as opposed to the next fiscal year. Uh, so in April, you get a couple of books, but for the, for fall, you get one book. For this, you get a, one book. This is the book for this current town meeting. If you don't have your town meeting book presently, there's also a digital version that's on the town website. You go to the town website, you go to Quick Links, uh, tab towards the center. Then there's a little link, uh, on the left of the little menu that comes up. It's town meeting information. And a digital copy of the book is in there as well as copies of the motions, which are updated. Uh, the warrant is on there. So that's another resource that, that folks have. But we put together this book, but that book doesn't come together overnight. It comes over in a typical town meeting over the course of, uh, six to eight weeks of usually weekly meetings. Sometimes we meet twice in a week in order to go over, uh, the various articles that come before you. We have, in, in order for something to be heard by town meeting, it has to come before advisory and town, uh, advisory and finance. There is a provision for town meeting to waive that requirement with a two-thirds vote if they choose to do so. But I've, in the eight years that I've been in advisory and finance, it's never come up and they've never had to do that. But we hold, uh- It's never come up and they've never had to do that. We hold hearings on all the articles. If you had, all the articles are important. If you had to say that one particular article or one particular topic was the most important. It would be our primary purpose, which is going over the budget. So as has been mentioned before by Lynn and several others. The budget is put together by the department heads and in the fall, it goes before the select board. They make their recommendations. They turn the budget over to us usually. Early January. We then divide ourselves into budget subcommittees. Those budget subcommittees have. Meetings with the various department heads and division heads that are as part of that. Particular budget subcommittee. And we make recommendations, those subcommittees to the entire advisory and finance committee. We then have a budget hearing which takes place. Usually in mid February, mid to late February. Where the individual budget subcommittees make presentations to the rest of the sub, the rest of the advisory and finance committee. And then we have a recommendation that the committee makes to town meeting for that April. So it is intended and it is hoped that town meeting members will be keeping abreast of the process as it goes on. And paying attention to the meetings that we are having. As opposed to just waiting for them to receive their books because. Only some of the information can be conveyed in the books. You also get minutes of our, of our meetings. However, you know, minutes are not transcripts, but there really is no substitute for watching the meetings. Ideally for attending the meetings. We, since COVID hit, we have primarily met virtually. We have transitioned back to meeting. In a, in physical format presently, but we also have a hybrid option. On our agendas, you will see if we are for some reason meeting entirely virtual, if there was an emergency or. Hopefully things don't revert to worse than they are now, but if they did, we had to go back to entirely virtual format. That would be on our agenda. Currently, the Zoom login information is on our agenda. So if you want to attend an advisory and finance committee meeting. And you, but you don't want to do so, or you can't attend so physically for one reason or another. You can attend virtually via Zoom with that login information. We encourage folks to do so. We allow public comment at our meetings. We allow it at the beginning, beginning and end of every meeting. We also allow it in relation to any particular agenda item, including town meeting articles that might be before us. If you have a strong opinion for or against a particular article. The best way for you to have your voice heard is not to wait until town meeting floor, which again is the end of a long process. Really the caboose of the train, but rather to get in there early and get before the advisory and finance committee and make your opinions heard. Because if you, for example, were able to make a convincing argument for or against your particular passion project in an article. And then that was the recommendation of advisory and finance. That would hold significant sway with the town meeting body. Town meeting doesn't always. Follow the recommendations of advisory and finance. We make non-binding recommendations. But town meeting often does follow the advice of advisory and finance. So it is, it is the best opportunity that you have to have a persuasive impact, not waiting until town meeting floor. But rather to get there early and get in front of us and make your case heard. And we do encourage that. And you could do that physically by coming to our meeting at the great hall at town hall. Or you could come via virtually. So as I said, during town meeting cycles, we typically for six to eight weeks, they're thereabouts. Are typically meeting on a weekly basis, sometimes twice in a week to go over those articles. Outside of town meeting cycles, provided there isn't a special town meeting like we're going through right now. We typically meet on the, the third Wednesday of every month unless there's nothing for us to take up. Outside of town meeting cycles, we also do things like approve. Well, that to potentially approve end of year transfer request, reserve fund transfers. Salary reserve transfers, things of that nature. We have our own reserve fund account that we manage. For emergency funds that need to be placed in one area or another and for unexpected expenses. So there are things that we do that are outside of the scope of town meeting, but town meeting does take up the majority of our, our time. And the majority of our, of our meetings are held during the town meeting cycles. We do produce those, those books that I mentioned. We are present at town meeting. You will hear our recommendations at town meeting. You will be told what the vote of the advisory and finance committee was. If we recommended it, we will be the one making the main motion. At town meeting. If we didn't recommend it, you will still hear what we had to say as to it. We only move things that we recommended. So if we voted against something, and there are a couple of things that we, as of right now, have voted against for this town meeting. You, we will not be the person making the motion because the motion is what is the actual action the town meeting makes. The article tells you what the topic is in the warrant, but the motion is the actual action that you're taking. Or not taking and what you're voting on. We, if we recommend something, then you're voting on that. And if, if we didn't recommend it, then we won't be making the main motion. Perhaps somebody else will. If no one is available to make a motion or no one wants to make a motion, for example, if every board and committee voted against the thing. For example, or the petitioner decided. Petitioner or the article proponent decided after taking out the warrant article that circumstances change, they no longer want to do this. You might see something withdrawn from a warrant. You might see something go no motion, no action at the request of the petitioner. And that means that either it was withdrawn before the warrant was signed and it's no longer active. Or after it was signed, the petitioners or article proponents decided that. They either didn't want to go forward or it didn't get approved by anyone and no one is, no one that can make a motion has made a motion there. So you will see that from time to time. But that's sort of the general rundown. We do encourage folks to attend our meetings. We do encourage folks to ask questions of us. We often, you will see us at many of the caucuses, as long as a caucus gives us reasonable notice. As to when their caucus is, we have a deadline every cycle as to when you can, to guarantee FinCom attendance. At your caucus, we will send folks to those caucuses. We've been. In a flurry, trying to send folks to as many of the caucuses that are happening for this cycle as possible. There are umpteen moving parts for this particular town meeting cycle. In a typical town meeting cycle, as long as we find out. Twenty-two days in advance of the given town meeting, when your caucus is, we will send somebody to your caucus. Two people if we can. There are now eighteen precincts. There are still only fifteen members of the advisory and finance committee. So I expect you'll see more caucuses attended by a single member of the advisory and finance committee versus, versus two, although we, we do try to send two when we can. But if you, if you, if your caucus gives us that information twenty-two days in advance of a typical town meeting. In April or October, we will send someone to that caucus. That person is there to explain. The outcome of advisory and finance committee. Recommendations, not their own personal opinions on the article. You can ask that individual or individuals what their personal opinions are. But they're really there to express what advisory and finance as a committee put forth. And, and answer any questions that you may have in relation to the particular articles that are coming before town meeting. So we are really there as an asset as to town meeting. It is our primary purpose is to, to give you those recommendations. To explain those recommendations and to provide sort of the, the structure of, of a town meeting in terms of. Giving you that information in the book, help reading out those motions that we're going to make during the town meeting. And being there through all those steps of the process. So we are an important component of the town meeting process, but we are just one component, as you've heard from. Many folks this evening. And we appreciate the, the invaluable help that we get from, from the town. We get a lot of help from Lynn Barrett. We, we get a tremendous amount of help from our. Our Jeanette White, who does the minutes for all of our meetings. Puts the agenda on the website and does a lot of the admin behind the scenes that people don't see about. But if it wasn't done, things wouldn't work. So Jeanette is an indispensable part of the team. We get a lot of help from the town manager's office. We are often interfacing with the. Select board as well as during the budget and with specific articles, the school committee, as well as other various. Boards and committees that may have something coming before a town meeting like open space committee of the community preservation committee. Things like that. So we are one important part of the machine, but it is a large machine. And we do our best to keep our part of that machine running as best as we can. So I think that's a good overview for folks, Steve. So that's all I have to say at the top. But I am available for questions if anybody has any questions on any of the articles.
Thank you, Kevin Canty. He is the chair of the advisory and finance committee. And like Kevin, I too am fortunate to have the support of Jeanette White. Who helps make us look good at town meeting. Jeanette is here this evening. Jeanette, welcome. And what would you like to add about your role in planning for town meeting? We know that you help in so many ways with the book and the motions, but what would you like to share with us?
Thank you, Steve, and good evening, everyone. My name is Jeanette White. I work in the towns finance department as the budget analyst. I wear many hats, including overseeing the town budget, employee accruals, community preservation committee financials. Administrative support to the advisory and finance committee as well as administrative support to the moderator. As far as town meeting portion of my duties. I maintain the town meeting website. Prepare the town meeting schedule. Prepare the town meeting books and mail them to town meeting members. Prepare advisory and finance meeting minutes as well as the minutes by article document you have referenced. Prepare the town meeting motions document. Assist with coordination of the moderator's opening ceremonies, agenda and article reference book. And finalize the motions as voted document after town meeting. And we're always available if anybody has any questions. And if I haven't matched you, stop by and say hi. That's all, Steve.
White, and again, we really appreciate all of your support. Before, during and after town meeting. And at this time, once we get to close to town meeting, we're very much dependent. On a couple of other groups. Going to bring in Julie Thompson. She is the executive director of PAC TV. And Julie, whether it's a remote town meeting or whether it's an in-person town meeting, you're there with us. Talk to us a little bit about how you interface with Plymouth Town Meeting.
Sure. Thank you, Steve. I'm Julie Thompson, the executive director of PAC TV, but it's the team here that does all the work. As, as you all have heard, the hard work has been done by the time town meeting arrives just about. We do want to facilitate the meeting to the public because since Plymouth is obviously a representative town meeting. The, all the public can't just attend. So it's really important that they're able to see it and it needs to be seen and heard. In the most professional way possible. Now, before we had remote town meetings, it was actually much easier. It required maybe seven or eight staff altogether. This particular type of town meeting requires of PAC TV about fifteen to sixteen staff members at all times. It's, it's much more complicated because there's a lot of moving parts and it's all done electronically. But basically what we do is we make sure that all one hundred and sixty-five town meeting members have their credentials. And we know there have been a few issues with this. The timing of this special town meeting is a little, a little odd based on the fact that a lot of people were just elected to be town meeting members. So by the time the next Monday rolls around, hopefully everyone will have their credentials and feel good about. Participating. But we have to make sure that everybody gets their credentials and that's all done via email. And there's, there's glitches sometimes with emails. So sometimes, sometimes it takes a while for everybody to get into the system. We also, aside from the town meeting members, have to make sure that all of the participants. Whether they be board or committee members or anyone that the town wants to have representing at the town meeting. That they also are invited in and have credentials so that we can see and hear them. Also, town meetings often will have PowerPoint presentations or videos or, or slideshows. They might have somebody coming in from a different area to talk about. Something to do with town meeting. All those people have to be brought in. And if you'll notice, you'll always see a lower third at the bottom of the screen, which is right now, mine says Julie Thompson, I believe. Town meeting orientation, it says right now. We, we have to put all those into our control room. We put all the videos into our control room. And it's all a question of switching back and forth between who's talking, what they're saying, what the people at home are seeing and hearing. What, oh, they're waving to me from the control room. Thanks, guys. So once town meeting is here, we have a help desk. So that new town meeting members can, can call somebody for a little, call a friend for a helpline. We also have people in our Zoom mission control because there's a hundred and sixty-five town meeting members and there's a whole bunch of other participants. When somebody is called upon to speak, we have to find them. We have to promote them. We have to bring them forward, which is why sometimes it's a little bit of a, a time delay between. When Steve says, you know, we'd like to hear from you, Suzie Jones, and Suzie Jones actually appears on the screen. It's all electronic, so it takes a while. So we, we hopefully will bring you the town meeting and any ancillary things like this to do a town meeting. We also run replays. We, we can cut this up if people want specific things down the road. To see how a certain thing went. We can edit things for you, but the town meeting itself is, is as is gavel to gavel, as all meetings should be. We are proud to be part of Plymouth. We are proud to be your access provider and we look forward to a long and wonderful relationship with the town of Plymouth. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie Thompson. She's the executive director for PAC TV here in Plymouth. We greatly appreciate the support that we've been receiving from PAC TV over the years. And at this time, we're going to bring in Kristi Kenny. Kristi Kenny is here this evening from OTI Technologies. And they have also been supporting Plymouth Town Meeting with our electronic voting and our clickers. And now more recently with the V voter platform. So Kristi. Since you're with us, if you can unmute yourself and what would you like to share with Plymouth Town Meeting this evening?
Good evening, everyone. I, our role is varied. So tonight, when, when your practice session, I'm running this remotely. For your actual town meeting, someone will be present in the studio. One of my colleagues will be present there and running the voting for you. It, it, it'll function the same way through the V voter platform and the request to speak. But I'm, I'm running this remotely from my office. So. And we're just here to support you to call up the votes and to help with the request to speak function.
You, Kristi Kenny from OTI Technologies. And we'll do another practice vote as soon as we finish with the orientation. We have our last panelist. We'd like to welcome Matthew Muratori. He is a state representative for the town of Plymouth, but he formally served not only on the advisory and finance committee. He served on the select, board of selectmen. He was a selectman. So Matt, you know your way around a few town meetings. But let's assume for the moment we finish town meeting and now it goes to the state. What happens at the state level?
Well, before I get to that, Steve, boy, it does bring back memories. You're absolutely right. I have fond memories of being on the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen. And my admiration to, to all of them. I, I know the work that Jeanette does. You know, Pam Bogati was there when, when I was there and God love you for all the work. It's, you know, what, what you're saying in the work she does, Kevin, is, 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 is more than what people can imagine. You know that, Kevin. And FinCom and Kevin's leadership, thank you for what you've done the last eight years. It's been awesome. It's just great to see this and congratulations to Larry Pfizer. On being elected clerk again. I'm not sure he wanted that again, but thank you, Larry, for stepping up and for helping and. And Steve, for you all being there and being a steady hand for town meeting, we really appreciate that. And what can you say about Julie and PAC TV and all the work they do? I'm glad Julie mentioned the amount of people it takes to actually do this. If it wasn't for PAC TV, we wouldn't be able to have what we're doing. So we thank them as well. So, so far though, after hearing everyone, I, I feel embarrassed that I have the easy part. What I have to do is kind of, kind of watch town meeting, monitor it, and then wait to see. What home rule petition you're going to be sending to me. To myself and Kathy Lanter and Sue Moran. And what we do is then take that home rule petition and file it on your behalf. Once we get the certification from the town clerk's office. So we work closely with the town clerk. Get the certification off and then we file it. And we follow the home rule petitions all the way through to the, to a final completion. So our part is an easy part compared to all, but it was great to be part of this panel and. I'm always available to anybody, anywhere in the town and particularly town meeting members as well. Feel free to reach out anytime. Congratulations to all town meeting members for being elected. And we appreciate all you do for the town as well, but feel free to reach out anytime if there's any questions. On any, any home rule petition or any other articles or any other questions you may have for me. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Matthew Muratori. He is a Plymouth state representative. And this completes the orientation portion of tonight's forum. I have hosted orientations in years past, not every year, but. Certainly felt that this year with all the new town meeting members that it wouldn't hurt to go back to some basics. For the building blocks of town meeting. And before we begin what would normally be presentation night, we're going to take another practice vote. And the next procedural vote at town meeting would be that Mr. Kenny moves that all business and all sessions. Of the special town meeting be commenced and conducted remotely. So OTI, once again, Kristi Kenny has told us, she's supporting us remotely. There it is on the screen. We can see the vote. When the timer begins, you can begin to vote now. So for those town meeting members participating this evening, let's practice. Let's see what a vote would look like tonight. None of these votes are binding. They're not official, but it's giving us a chance. But it's giving us a chance to practice as we prepare for next Tuesday. Also gives town meeting members an opportunity to see who is present and voting and maybe check up on fellow town meeting members. So the total, we're now at 50 yes, 11 no, three abstentions. Again, precinct one, we have one person. We have three in two. And we have now six in three. So you know, number of these precincts, precinct four, we have three people. Four in precinct five and two in six. So some of these, we do not have majority. Hopefully, some of the people who are present are part of the leadership of the precinct because we need to chase down other members. Seven has four. Eight, you have seven. Nine, you have two. So again, some of the precincts actively participating, others not so much. Precinct 10, we have four. 11, two, and we have four in 12. As you get to see who is here, so please. Precinct 13, we have five. Precinct 14, we have two. And currently, in 15, we do not have anyone. So we did have somebody earlier, but we need to make sure precinct 15 participates. 16, we have three. We have seven. In 17, we have five. And 18. So again, for those of you that are participating, let's try to help our fellow town meeting members get sworn in, get their email addresses to the town clerk, and have them log in. At this time, we're going to begin our presentation night. We're going to do as we do in each presentation night. We're going to go with Article One. And Article One is on the warrant. And normally, we would go right to the presentation. So with that, once again, we welcome back Betty Cavaco. She is Chair of the Select Board. And Betty is going to begin the presentation. Good evening once again, Betty. And if you can unmute yourself, Betty. So there you go. Go ahead.
There we go. Thank you so much, Steve. And thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. And we have prepared a presentation for town meeting and for this preview. And PAC TV has, the first part of it is an actual video of the property at 46 Sandwich Road. And the next portion of it is a PowerPoint with some of the actual facts of the property and what the town plans to do. So if PAC TV would please start the first portion of the video.
This parcel of land has presented itself to the town as a major opportunity for the future of the Town of Plymouth. It's in an ideal location in this community. It's a high-value location as far as the current purchase price of $3.75 million. The appraised value is already at 4.3. We all recognize that we have to, at some point in the next three to five years, reconstruct Station One. We also know by hearing from Chief Flynn that there's going to be a greater likelihood in the next 10 years that we're going to have to expand the space over at the police headquarters. So this piece of property today is an investment in the town's future tomorrow because it gives us flexibility to be able to rethink where Station One can be and then long-term where the police headquarters potentially could be.
In 2021, we did a station location study. Headquarters specifically should move because we're right against the water. We can only respond about 180 degrees from our location. So we don't have a good 360-degree coverage of our response area. The study indicated that it would be better if it was a little bit more west and specifically put a pin in the area of 46 Sandwich Road. The condition of the headquarters has really been deteriorating quite rapidly over the past several years. A lot of it had to do with the water damage that we had incurred over a period of probably six or seven years. There was water basically pouring into this station. The electrical panels down in the basement, the conduit had water pouring into it and it corroded away the connections where the wires hook up. So it was potentially a fire hazard. We have an underground water problem that is always there. It's constant. We have three separate areas in the basement where we have multiple sump pumps working 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I don't think it's socially acceptable if you have the means to cohabitate different genders in the same living area without some kind of separation. We don't have that option here. As big as the station is, we have one shower facility, one shower itself. And we could have potentially 16 people at this station at any one given time.
It may not be me, but in the future, Chief will be looking to expand. And we need a location to be able to meet that goal. When the building was built, we had 111 total employees. By now, have 152. All of my available space is at max capacity. If I wish to, say, for example, expand my detective division, I have no room for them. If I want to add new staff, I have no room to put them in without possibly having a double-up space. I have plans to develop some other specialized units in the future. Again, I have no space for them. Our locker rooms are at capacity. If we were able to move to a new location, we would have an area specifically designed for our seized vehicles and other seized lodge equipment. We have some vehicles out there that have been here two or three years that we can't do anything with until the case has been adjudicated. That we have three trailers that we kind of parked across the street because of lack of room in the rear lot. We've had to keep it outside the secure area with the fence.
Sure, we have a 30,000 square foot structure that's already existing here. It was historically used as a training facility. The building itself is in good condition. It can serve as a training facility in the future. And then during the course of the next couple of years, that'll give us some time to then look at a redesign or a design of a future fire station here on this footprint.
The 46 Sandwich Road is interesting for the Fire Department because we know that we need a new fire station. We know that a fire station could be located in that area.
Where we are, five, 10, 15 years from now, we could be well over 200 officers. So we'll need ample space for them.
We're not building land. And to acquire this piece of property is really going to give us flexibility in the future so that we have opportunities to make really smart strategic decisions about where our public safety facilities need to be located here in town.
Okay, so that was the video. We now have a PowerPoint that gives a little bit more in-depth detail to the uses of the property and what the town, we plan on doing with that property. As the town manager said, that we aren't building, we don't have land. We don't have access to this type of land anywhere around town. So I want to give you a little bit of history. And myself and the vice chair and the previous town manager and of this one, of course, we're the negotiating team that were involved in this property acquisition. So during regular pilot negotiations with Holtek in January of '21, the town requested that Holtek donate the land at 46 Sandwich Road. In response, Holtek countered by seeking $7.5 million for the purchase of that land. In March of 2022, then-chairman Richard Quintle was informed that Holtek agreed to sell the property to Mr. Vale, a local real estate developer, for $2.3 million. That same month, the town approached Mr. Vale to discuss the land deal for 46 Sandwich Road. And through negotiations, the town and Mr. Vale agreed to a purchase price of $3.75 million pending town meeting approval. Next slide, please. So where this, it's a 24-acre site located in Chiltonville on Sandwich Road near the Route 3 bypass. The property currently hosts 30,376 square-foot freestanding one- and two-level wood frame building constructed in 1974. The site is serviced by all utilities, including electricity, natural gas, and municipal water. And the site has on-site septic. The purpose was originally built as a religious facility and most recently has been utilized as a training facility related to the Pilgrim Nuclear Power Station. Next slide, please. The property is assessed at $3.46700 and is appraised at $4.350, $4.350 million as of May 12, 2022. If approved, the property would be purchased at $3.75 million. According to market comparisons, similar lots were adjusted 5% to 15% for improved market conditions over the past three years, thus seeing an appreciation in value in page 70 of the town meeting warrant. Next slide, please. So these are the potential funding of the site. A short while ago, the Board of Selectmen met at 5:00. And it was a unanimous vote that we raise and appropriate and not use ARPA funds to allow ARPA funds to go through the process that we have already set in place with projects. So what it would be is $1.4 million we would borrow. We have a premium on debt fund of $78,591. And then we have free cash of $2.73. I can't see the screen that well for some reason. It's very small. $2.73409, which is a total of the $3,750,000. So when we were meeting a short while ago, we actually did discuss the plan for the board is that we have a, we have Brad Brothers, who is our Assistant Town Manager. And he's doing a full scope of all the town properties because it's time that we put these properties up for sale. And the intent of doing that is, if this is approved with town meeting, that we would sell those properties and pay down that debt as quickly as possible. And even if it were a long-term debt, it would cost each taxpayer $5.11, according to the Finance Director. Next plan, please. So the proposal for this property is municipal use. A vote of approval for purchasing this parcel of land would be a long-term strategic acquisition that would provide land that isn't available anywhere else in Plymouth to be used for future capital improvement planning and needs. One of the things that, as we all know, the town operated in a very reactive state. And the Board of Selectmen is committed to changing that to proactive. So, and we feel that this is something that we can be proactive regarding. The land would be used for a new public safety complex, including a new fire and police headquarters that would address the town's structurally and functionally deficient facilities while finding a cost-effective solution. Initial discussions also include repurposing the previously existing building on the property for a training complex for first responders. And the town intends to preserve the portion of the land for open space conservation. Some of the training, so as, it was called the Chiltonville Training Center. And it was used as a training center for all of our employees that were at Pilgrim Nuclear Power Station. In the past, within the past couple of months, we're looking at like regional training centers. And I know that the chief can probably highlight some of the things that they were looking for because I know that state police have been there, court officers. So it has been used as a training center right up until a very short time ago. So we are hopeful that town meeting will allow this board to move forward and this town to move forward in a strategic manner that is very important to this town. So, and Dana, maybe you could just give a quick, brief discussion about the regional training that people seem to be looking for.
So at this time, we can bring in Plymouth Police Chief Dana Flynn. You saw him on the video. And we'd like to welcome Chief Flynn. Former town meeting member, I might add. Good evening, Chief Flynn.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, there's been a lot of discussion amongst police chiefs regarding lack of training facilities for training new recruits, training veteran officers. So a location such as 46 Sandwich Road could be an option to the state that should be available to them if the town were to purchase that property, that they could perhaps come up with an agreement or plan to either lease or rent out a portion of that facility specifically for training. Right now, it's a lack of space. Academies right now are opening up and they're really filled up. The state is doing its due diligence and they really are trying to keep up with the demand. But it's available, available space, available locations. So it's very intriguing, very interesting location on the South Shore. Could service the Cape, the South Shore area, South Coast. So it'd be something to definitely consider in the future.
Thank you. And that was Plymouth Police Chief Dana Flynn. And I believe that completes the presentation for Article One. At a presentation night, we're not debating the merits or deliberating on whether to vote up or down on any of the articles, but rather trying to provide information so that you know where to go to get information as you prepare for town meeting. I do see on our V voter, precinct six, Craig French, if we can bring him in. He talks, he clicked on to speak on the motion, but we don't have any motions that we're debating at this time. But let's bring in Mr. French anyway to see if he has a question with respect to the presentation. While we do that, I want to read again, a town meeting member who was watching on PAC TV and not through the Zoom conferencing said she had trouble seeing some of the video. So again, there'll be reruns on channels Comcast 15, Verizon 47 tomorrow night, Thursday night, Friday night at 4:00 p.m., Monday and Tuesday, 8:00 a.m., 11:00 a.m., and also on Monday at 7:00 p.m. So those are some of the rerun times. So let's bring in Craig French. Also, if we could bring in Brian Fitzgerald. Each of them has questions. And following the presentation portion, we'll be going to the town meeting preview portion, which will be to discuss the motions. And in preparation for that, I've asked Jeanette White to email a copy of the motion for Article One.
Frank is not in Zoom. You'll have to go to the next guy.
Who is not on Zoom, Mr. French? So, Mr. French, you're on V voter, but you're not on Zoom. So we're going to go to Brian Fitzgerald. Mr. Fitzgerald, good evening. Do you have a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the appropriate person. I saw in the presentation that this lot is 28 acres. Approximately how much of that acreage is needed to build the public services facilities that the town is proposing to put on there? How much of that lot would remain unused after these buildings are constructed?
Thank you. A question from Brian Fitzgerald, precinct 10. Let's go back to the panel. I'm going to begin with the town manager, Derek Brindisi. Are you prepared to respond or would you like to throw this to one of your staff?
I'm happy to respond to that. So that's a great question. We have, our engineering department did a conceptual layout of the parcel. And the conceptual has a 50,000-square-foot police headquarters and a 30,000-square-foot fire headquarters with 10 acres of open space remaining.
Thank you. And is that, have any further questions, Mr. Fitzgerald?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. And with respect to the request for additional information... And with respect to the request for additional information on the presentation, town manager Derek Brindisi has just sent a link to watch the video for the presentation, and it's been forwarded to Jeanette White. And Jeanette, if you could just send it to all the town members for whom we have email addresses. Anything else with respect to, do we have Mr. French yet? No, so, Mr. French, we have you on V voter. We don't have you on the Zoom video conferencing platform. When you are able to log in on that, we will bring you in for any question you might have. But at this time, we're going to continue with the warrant. Article Two, we have a motion which will be taken up. We do not have a presentation. And Article Three, we do not have a presentation. However, for Articles Four and Five, if we can bring in Randy Parker. Randolph Parker is the petitioner for Articles Four and Five. And I'm not sure if Mr. Parker is with us. If he isn't, let's bring in town meeting member Ida Parker. If we have Ida, Ida will actually be moving the motion. Do we have Ida Parker? No, we don't have her either. We do. What? All right, she's just been moved over as a panelist. So let's bring in Ida, if you can unmute yourself. Welcome, there's Ida. Good evening, Ida. How are you?
Well, thank you. How are you?
Okay, do you have a presentation? Or is your father with you to make the presentation?
He is not with me to make the presentation. I am surprised that he's not on his own Zoom link himself. I was just about to message him and tell him that you were looking for him. But from what I know from the articles, I believe Article Four is about making it so that Conservation Commission would have to go through town meeting to put through any of their new rules and regulations by making it a bylaw. And then Article Five was going to be about grandfathering in properties prior to 1973 to the current rules and regulations. But I don't have any presentation on those two articles at this time.
Thank you very much. So that completes the presentations for the special town meeting. So at this time, we're going to go to the town meeting preview. And the town meeting preview is an opportunity to review motions. And in addition to the main motions, prior to town meeting, we will provide you with any other motions to amend the main motions or procedural motions. And for this evening, we have five motions, beginning with Article One, the most recent one. You can find that on the website, the town website. For anyone that has not been on the town meeting member email list, over 100 town meeting members were also just emailed the motion. I'm going to read it into the record, as I will do at town meeting. Ms. Cavaco moves, select board is authorized to acquire by purchase for open space and/or recreational purposes and/or general municipal purposes, and to accept the deed to the town of Plymouth of a fee simple interest in land located at 46 Sandwich Road in the town of Plymouth, composed of 24.4 acres, more or less, being shown on assessor's map, 47 Lot 8, parcel ID 47047000008000. Said land to be held under the care, custody, and control of the select board and to further authorize the select board to grant a conservation restriction in said property or portion thereof in accordance with requirements of General Laws, Chapter 184, Sections 31 to 33, and authorize the select board on behalf of the town to enter into all agreements, execute any and all instruments as may be necessary to affect said acquisition. And further, that $3,750,000 is appropriated to undertake such acquisition, including all costs incidental or related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, is authorized to borrow $1,400,000 pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1, or any other enabling authority. Transfer $2,271,409 from free cash. Transfer $78,591 from premium debt refund. That's a lot of language. You'll have the text as you prepare for town meeting. At this time, I'm going to go first to Betty Cavaco, who is the maker of the motion. Betty, normally, we would have the maker of the motion be available to comment, or you could designate someone who might speak to the motion. So she's left, she's gone to a caucus. So I think in that case, we're going to bring in her town manager, Derek Brindisi. Derek, anything you'd like to add in connection with the motion before I go to Mr. Canty and his committee?
I mean, nothing that hasn't already been said. Yeah, I think I would just want to provide clarity. There's been a lot of conversation of, you know, what the purpose of this land. I think it's quite clear from the video that, you know, this is a, this is an opportunity. This is a strategic investment to cite our public safety facilities. So, you know, the hope is that town meeting members would find value in this acquisition, recognizing that we're going to, we have one major capital need coming up, and then probably a second one in a decade to come. So, thank you.
Thank you, and that's Derek Brindisi, and he is Plymouth Town Manager. Unless there's anything else, we're going to move on. Again, we're not debating the articles, but we are going to move and consider about the articles. This time, I'm going to call in Kevin Canty, the Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee on Article One.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In a vote of five in favor with six opposed and no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends that town meeting does not approve Article One. This was a close vote after a lengthy presentation and question-and-answer session. The town outlined their desire to purchase this property now for a future municipal use. The presentation said the most likely future municipal use for the parcel was as a location on which to construct a new fire department headquarters and police department building. The current fire department headquarters has numerous problems, and the town has been looking to replace it for some time now. The current police department will need to either be significantly renovated or replaced within the next five to 10 years to meet the needs of our growing community. And Chief Flynn worries that the present location of the department does not have the room for the current structure to be adequately renovated. The Community Preservation Committee voted to contribute $600,000 towards the $3.75 million purchase price to preserve 10.36 acres of it, all of which would not be needed for the fire or police departments' projects on the parcel as open space. The fire and police department projects are not part of this article and would require future town meeting action to be undertaken at a later date. While some members of the committee were in favor of purchasing this property consistent with this plan, a majority was not able to support the proposal as it was presented to us. There was inconsistent messaging by some speaking on behalf of the town that suggested the parcel may be used for a cemetery rather than as a site for the fire and police departments, and/or that a conservation restriction on the land was perhaps an undesirable restriction of potential future municipal uses. These uncertainties, when paired with the purchase price, prevented a majority of the committee from supporting the article.
Thank you, and that is Kevin Canty, Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee. Usually for town meeting, we have a presentation night that is separate to the town meeting preview. But in view of the short window of opportunity that we have in planning this special town meeting, and also being mindful of the number of articles that we have, I decided that I would combine the orientation, the presentation night, and the preview to one forum, which is coming before you. Now, this particular motion would be a two-thirds vote. They're all going to be roll call. Other motions that might be procedurally presented include a motion to change the order of the articles, requires a two-thirds vote. A motion to reconsider is a majority vote, and it's made by someone who voted on the prevailing side. So although we're beginning with Article One, we're going to move on to Article Two. Article One or any article could come back under a motion to reconsider. And having said that, I'm going to move on to Article Two, which is the motion for hybrid town meetings. It's a majority and a roll call vote. And for this one, we do have the motion being moved by Mr. Canty. Mr. Canty.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In a vote of nine in favor with no opposition and two abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Two. Approval of this article will authorize the select board to petition the Massachusetts General Court for special legislation substantially set forth below in the book that you have received, the report and recommendations of the advisory and finance committee in regards to holding hybrid town meetings. This home rule petition, once enacted into law, would give Plymouth the option to hold hybrid or entirely virtual town meetings with no sunset clause or expiration date on this ability. The moderator would have to request which type of town meeting to hold. The select board would have to approve that format selection, and town meeting would have to authorize that business be conducted in the selected format before any other business is taken up in that given town meeting. This maintains the basic structure of the procedure that has been used since the outbreak of the pandemic that town meeting is already familiar with, but will permit town meetings to be conducted in the much-requested hybrid format, safe from legal challenges. The specific text of the petitioned special legislation is included in the report and recommendations of the Advisory and Finance Committee book.
So majority vote at this time, I'd like to bring back in Matthew Muratori. Representative Muratori, you were initially a co-sponsor on the enabling legislation during COVID for remote participation. You also have brought, I believe, before the legislature, legislation similar to this that was going to apply for the whole state. Could you weigh in on why a home rule petition might be helpful for those people in Plymouth who might want a hybrid town meeting? What's the difference between what you guardian proposed?
Yeah, Mr. Ar, thank you. So with the legislation that we filed for the entire state to do that makes, it's difficult because there are some states and towns that just don't want that. So when you do a home move petition that's supported by the town, particularly by town meeting, it's a lot easier to try to get something like that passed as long as there's no legality issues within the language of it. And usually, they're not. It's usually the town's town council that actually reviews the article before it gets submitted in. Then it goes to our House Council at the state level to review it as well. And if there's any legal issues at that point, then that will be brought back to the town. But barring any legal issues that, once it gets certified from the town and gets sent to us at the state, we file it, and we'll follow the process through. Now, normally, in my time there, and I think in time before with Senator Murray and Senator DiMascito as well, I don't think there's ever been a home move petition not accepted. So this is going to be an interesting one. You know, assuming that it's going to pass town meeting to see how this is going to, how this is going to flow. Because, you know, it's something that's going to go against what the, what the laws currently are. And will they allow one town to do it? So we'll follow that through, but it is better doing as a home move petition than as straight legislation. I just don't think the straight legislation is going to go anywhere. And our session ends on July 31st, so I think that's going to end up going to study and just die.
Thank you. So this is different from what's previously been proposed. Any further discussion? If not, we're going to move on to Article Three, and it is a lease of town property for telecommunications purposes. Again, back to Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of 11 in favor, zero in opposition, and zero abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Three. Approval of this article will transfer the care, custody, management, and control of the property located at 131 Camelot Drive, shown as Lot 24-2 on Plymouth Assessor's Map 83, for the purpose of leasing for telecommunications purposes and open up a new potential revenue source for the town at this location. Similar lease agreements have been entered into with private companies at other locations in town, and those arrangements generate between $35,000 and $64,000 in revenue per location annually. Revenue obtained through these lease agreements will go into and does currently go into the general fund.
Thank you, Kevin Canty, Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee. This would be a two-thirds vote, and they're all roll call. And I'm requesting that if you have motions to amend on any of these main motions, you can email me, FST, my initials, at plymouthlaw.com. You can call me at 508-746-1464, and we'll try to help you frame a motion if you want to present one that is either substantive in nature or procedural. And as we come to the next two motions, caution that it's very difficult to receive a substantive motion on town meeting floor when we have a bylaw because bylaws need to be researched and make sure that they are consistent with other parts of either our town bylaws or our charter. So a caution, if you wish to make a change on Articles Four and Five, very important to notify us in advance. And I did also have a question. I don't have any motions to change the order, and I don't have any motions to amend yet at this time, but letting town meeting members know that you have time in which to do that. I'm going to request that we receive everything, hopefully by the end of this week, since we have a long three-day weekend before town meeting. So at this time, we're going to go to Article Four. Let's bring back in Ida Parker. So first of all, Article Four. Again, it's a citizen petition, so we could have a petition of presentation up to 15 minutes. Ida Parker, Precinct Seven, moves the town vote to amend the town general bylaw, Wetlands Protection, Chapter 196, Section 196-5A, as written in the warrant. Welcome again, Ida Parker. It's a majority vote for this bylaw. Anything you want to add with respect to the motion?
So in talking with my dad about this, and I was out there getting signatures and for this petition and for this motion, just, you know, I think we've been dealing with Conservation Commission for a long time. As many of you know, my dad's a land surveyor. We also have a home on the water. And for Conservation and other boards to be able to go ahead and put their own rules and regulations into place, well, it can be very convenient for the town and can be very convenient for Conservation and move things like that. Do we really want to be letting five or seven people go ahead and be making these rules and regulations without running it by the town meeting, without creating a formal bylaw around that? I know we just went and did a whole thing with the Board of Health. I was on the Short-Term Rental Subcommittee, and again, trying to get some of these approved by town meetings for that to be a bylaw rather than these boards going ahead and making these rules and regulations on their own without it being run by the people. So as far as my two cents, that's kind of where I know I've stood in these conversations with my father in kind of moving that forward and being an advocate for that.
Thank you, and that's Article Four, citizen petition. It's a majority vote. And unless there's any more discussion, I'm going to go to Kevin Canty, Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee. Mr. Canty.
In a unanimous vote of zero in favor, 10 in opposition, and no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends that town meeting does not approve Article Four. This article seeks to require the rules, regulations, and other regulatory responsibilities of the Conservation Commission to be approved by town meeting before they take effect. Town meeting has previously voted to relieve itself of such responsibility. Concerns were expressed to the committee that restoring such a process would significantly complicate the regulatory process, prevent the commission from effectively responding to developments outside of the town meeting calendar, and interfere with the ability of trusted commission members with expertise to do their job of protecting Plymouth's wetlands and water effectively.
Thank you, Kevin Canty, Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee. Thank you, Kevin Canty, Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee. Again, a majority vote. Going to move on to Article Five, another citizen petition. Again, Ms. Ida Parker, Precinct Seven, moves town vote to amend the general bylaws, Town General Bylaws, Wetland Protection, Section 196-6, exceptions as written in the warrant. Ida Parker, on your motion for Article Five, anything you want to say with reference to the motion?
So I believe this motion has to do with grandfathering in properties that were developed prior to 1973. I know personally, living on the ocean, living in a property that had been developed prior to that time, a lot of the rules and regulations that are being put into place now are very difficult to abide by for some of those properties. So I know a lot of those property owners, and I've spoken to many of them up and down the Animate Avenue, are feeling very similar to that. And I'm sure there would be a lot of regulations to go around all of that and how that would actually work. But my dad obviously would know a lot more around that. I'm obviously in favor of it. It is very difficult sometimes to be going against Conservation Commission with all of these new rules and regulations. I know that some of them are, make a lot of sense. You know, it's really great to be like conserving the environment and all of that, but some of them are a little bit harsh. And for some of our older properties, make it very, very difficult for us even maintain those properties. So just from a personal standpoint, that's kind of where I'm coming from on that one. Obviously, hopefully, my father will be able to present at some point in time. I know he's on the Precinct One caucus right now, presenting. And so he has a much better understanding of where he's going with that article. So I apologize for not being more well-versed on it.
Thank you. And that is Ida Parker on Article Five, motion. Kevin Canty on the motion.
In a unanimous vote of zero in favor, 10 in opposition, and no abstentions, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends that Town Meeting does not approve Article Five. This article would seek to introduce a grandfather clause for all residential lots and structures that existed prior to March 27, 1973. The ramifications of introducing a grandfather clause to parcels that would be transferable from one property owner to the next 49 years after the fact may be incalculable, given the scope of the proposal. But the significant potential for wide-reaching harm by such an act was unpalatable to the committee.
Thank you, Kevin Canty. And that completes the motions on the preview. And before we go to our final vote of the evening, I'd like to go back to Assistant Town Moderator Nicole Manfredi. She's been monitoring the chat and observing the technology this evening. Nicole, any closing comments you'd like to make?
I just want to encourage folks that are new to the town meeting procedures to be sure that, I did link the training video in the chat twice. So take a peek at that, and then be sure to participate in one of the upcoming training sessions. That one will be hosted on Thursday, June 16 at 6:00 PM. And the other one will be Saturday, June 18 at 10:00 AM. I have sent the link to that first virtual training session to Catherine with the hopes that it will get pushed out to the precincts. And lastly, if anyone who is new to the process would like support on Tuesday, the 21st, please email me. My email is in the chat. And I can make arrangements for you to participate from Plymouth North High School. But that, we do need to know that you're going to be there. I have to make those arrangements to be sure we have the support.
Thank you, Nicole Manfredi, Assistant Town Moderator. At this point, we're going to bring in our motion to adjourn. And as we do that, have our final vote. I urge town meeting members to look as we scroll through the precincts. You'll see the motion to adjourn coming up on the screen. I can see it. One is a yes, two is a no, three is abstentions. We're going to get a chance to practice voting one more time this evening, and we'll get a chance to see how the precincts are voting this evening and the number of members we have. So if we can call up on the screen momentarily. While we do that, I'd like to thank everyone who participated on the panel, including not only Nicole Manfredi, but Betty Cavaco, Larry Peiser, Derek Brindisi, Lynn Barrett, Kevin Canty, Jeanette White, Julie Thompson, Kristy Kenny, and Matt Muratori. Thanks to all of them and all of you who have participated this evening. There's the timer. We're going to go and see one more vote. You can begin voting now. The timer is clicking. This is how it'll be next Tuesday at your special town meeting. You'll have an opportunity to vote often on the articles, procedural. We have multiple procedural motions in the beginning. We have substantive motions on the articles. The voting has been completed. Let's look at the precincts as we wait for the results. 60 say yes, zero no, zero abstention. No one in Precinct One, I understand they're caucusing. But Precinct Two, we have two people. Let's get the other seven to participate. Two-thirds of Precinct Three, we have six people. We have three that we need to encourage. And then moving on to Precinct Four, we have four people. We need five more. Precinct Five, again, four people. We need five more. Precinct Six, we have one. Maureen, we need your help in chasing down your other precinct members. Four in Precinct Seven, we have five more. We have six, two-thirds of Precinct Eight. And we have three more. Only two in Nine. We need seven more to actively participate next week. We have a vacancy also in that precinct. Three in Precinct Ten, that's a third of the precinct. Precinct Eleven, we only have two. But Precinct Twelve, we do have five. So again, we've got a week in which to bring all town meeting members in. Precinct Thirteen, we have five and only one. So it looks like Christine Richards, you can work with the other people in your precinct. And Precinct Fifteen, at this point, we don't have anyone. So there are the precincts.